I'll say hello to everyone.
Is there anybody even there?
No, no, there is no one, so I'm starting it. Hold on.
So this is who we're talking to?
Well.
Okay, I think I'm live. Uh, hello, everybody. I don't know who's here, but whoever is here, um, hi. Uh, welcome to what was at one time supposed to be a consultation meeting, but technically I think it's now called an information meeting. Uh, we'll be discussing, uh, the, um, uh, minor exemptions with respect to the Public Works Yard.
There's no matter of Jensen, Mr. Mayor. It's about the bylaw.
The changing of subdivision by law.
Yeah.
Changing the bylaw. Okay, fine. Uh, so, uh, nobody, uh, commented on the, uh, on the bylaw changing. Um, so that's why we're calling it an information meeting, but it comes to the same thing. Uh, I'm going to ask Councillor Eddy to, um, to basically run this part of the meeting. And, um, I will, uh, take over when we get to our eight o'clock special council meeting. And if this one ends really quickly, we'll disappear and we'll come back for the special council meeting at eight. Okay, without further ado, Councillor Eddy, uh, perhaps you can explain all this and take any questions.
Well, is there anybody there? If there's nobody there, there's no point talking.
There's nobody there.
There are zero attendees.
Zero attendees.
Okay, so I'll just give you, I'll give counsel an update, basically where we're at. Um, essentially what we've gotten to at this point is we've got, uh, the, the, the fifteen day consultation has, is up already. Um, nobody made any, uh, consultations during that period. Uh, we're now at step two, which is a second draft, which we're passing tonight. This is with regards to the townhouses, not with regards to the Public Works Yard building. And, uh, then starts as of tomorrow, an eight day, uh, period to open a register. So if they open a register, then there is, you have to go with the register and referendum process. If, if over the next eight days, nobody signs, uh, nobody asks for a register, then we, uh, then the third, uh, draft, the third, basically, it's the adoption of the, uh, the third step is the adoption of the, uh, of the, of the changed subdivision by law. Um, and, and then that would be done. And once we have that, um, I believe we're still waiting for the, um, the servitude. Um, that's to control what's actually to be built. Uh, once we have that, so then sometime around, uh, early June, we can go to S E A O because the R F P is already done. So we can go to the S E A O for sale. Uh, and then, um, that's on the, on the townhouse side, on the public work side. Um, we changed the, the, the zone, not the zone, the, the, the appunto, came in and changed the actual lining of the, uh, of where the Public Works Building is to go in order to make the line straight, because the fence currently is not straight. So you need a symmetrical space in order to put the, the building in. And that will be a, um, that's going to be a form that's going to have to be signed or a document that's got to be signed um, by the, the mayor. Uh, so we're going to be giving the power to do that tonight as well uh, in the special council meeting. And then there is a possible minor derogation that's going to come up at a later date, which we don't know about yet until we've actually built the, have the plans for the, uh, for the, for the new building. Um, and that minor derogation will be, the minimum offsets will be able to say we're afoot from the property line between the, the, the new Public Works Building and the, the park. Um, so tonight, we're going to be doing the second draft. We're going to be doing the, giving the notary the power, uh, giving the authorization to, to the mayor or to the staff, uh, to, to do the work with the notary, to sign the paper, and we're going to be, uh, dealing with the, the land surveyor, which is the, uh, the change on the Public Works Yard side of it. So that's what we're doing tonight. Any questions from you guys?
Well, is there any public?
There's no public. This is, this is for the benefit of counsel and yourself.
Still no attendees.
Okay, if there are no attendees, is it possible? If someone will monitor if we have any attendees, then I think the easiest thing we can do now is review the council agenda, because I'd rather not have to do it while we're actually in the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if you look at the top left-hand corner, above your pictures and it says.
Yeah, it says zero. Michael's right. It says zero attendees.
Attendees. We, so we, our numbers do not count in those numbers. So if, for example, you saw twelve there, it doesn't include the nine of us. You understand? It's purely exterior members.
Okay, okay, that's good.
The fact, the fact that we're all on, let's say nine of us, and it's still showing zero. So if it jumps to five, it's none, none, none of us. It's five exterior people.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to do the agenda right now then?
Yeah, please, let's do it.
I have a question.
I don't know if it's advisable to do this on a live recorded meeting.
I, I agree, I agree with Warren, because, you know, if, 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 if something slips, I, I just think it's.
Okay, okay.
Can we adjourn this meeting if there's not, if there's no attendees? Can we adjourn it and then go back?
Before, before we adjourn the meeting, can I jump just, I want to bring one, one piece of opinion, and I'd like to hear what the rest of council feel, because I may be the only one who feels this way. I never mentioned this before, but I think it's, it's the right form and to mention, and I'm happy if there is nobody listening from the public. And so the point I have here, we're going to sell, uh, which I'm on board, actually, so I make that clear from the beginning, and I'm absolutely on board. But we're going to do this in a very delicate time of our mandate. In about five months from now, or less, there is election. So how this is perceived for us to move in such a very important, extremely important item in this mandate, in my opinion, maybe the most important item of our mandate, to sell piece of land that the town had, the rare piece of land that we own in, uh, five months before municipal election. I think this is something that we need to give some thoughts and discuss it, and immediately, and again, I say it clearly, I am on board as I was from the beginning, because just to repeat this, I've said it, said it many times. Uh, the idea to develop the, that park originally came from me, and the mayor can attest to that. So absolutely, I'm on board, but how do you guys feel five months before the election, we are going to sell or make a decision, the most important decision of this mandate?
Well, for, isn't it a fact that we have spent practically the past three and a half years getting this to the point where we can sell it? Which means that we've made a decision to sell this land a long time ago. The fact that it took three and a half years to get to the point where we are should not preclude us. I mean, Jack in particular, to my, to my knowledge, worked damn hard to get to where we are, and I don't see why we can't cross the finish line during our mandate. We've done all this during the past four years, and maybe even earlier, if, I may be wrong, maybe even beyond four years. But I've heard Jack talk about this project time and time and time again. So if we have made the decision to go forward with this all these years, why should we stop now at the last step?
Harvey, can I say something?
Sure, go right ahead.
You're missing my point, Harvey. You're changing, my point is not the merit of the project. Okay, Harvey? So don't give me this lecture. I don't need your lectures. All I'm saying is.
I'm not giving you a lecture.
You're giving me a lecture.
No, you're missing my point.
I'm giving you a story that I knew from day one.
My point is that we as a council made a decision.
Can you listen to me, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I know exactly the sequence of this project, okay? And I've been there from day one, and I'm on board. This is the third time. Third time, I am telling you, I'm on board. All I'm saying, I'd like the councillors to pronounce themselves and say, how do you feel five months before the election to sell, to make a decision that is extremely important in this mandate? If you feel comfortable, it may be, that's okay.
Okay, so can I answer now? I'm trying to say, Leon, that for the past four years, we have, as a council, determined that we should proceed to the sale.
Meeting now. Joining the caucus meeting again. Thank you. Goodbye.
Is that you, Martin, Siri? What's the, okay. Thank you. Huh? Okay, the people are already entered. Then they are attending our conversation. Okay.
Bonjour, Pierre.
Harvey, you're live, by the way.
Pierre, you're muted.
Harvey is live, eh?
I know, but Pierre is muted.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, so, uh, we're live. Hello, everybody. I can see that we, I've been taught by Councillor Goldwax how to read my screen, so I can see that we have three attendees. Uh, so welcome, welcome indeed. Um, so we're going to start our special council meeting. Um, do we have everyone? I just want to see which councillors I have, uh.
Missing, uh, Jack Eddy. I will try and call him in.
We're missing Jack and Cheryl.
Okay, let's just see if we can get Councillor Eddy on board.
Will Mrs. Wigginsburg be there tonight?
Uh, best to my understanding, she's having technical difficulties, so I, unless she suddenly shows up, I don't think so.
Okay.
Cheryl?
And Mr. Mayor, I did not receive any question for the special council meeting of tonight up to now.
Okay. And let me just see something. And so far, nobody has, uh, written any questions either.
So we can skip.
Yeah, but, uh, Jack's here. Okay, perfect. Council's here, everyone, except Councillor Wigginsburg, who, uh, who couldn't make it for tech, for technical reasons. Um, so we will, uh, get going. Uh, the first item is the, um, public question period, but there are no questions. So we will move on to three point O, adoption of the agenda on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Um, it is resolved that the agenda of the special council meeting is hereby adopted as submitted. Anyone opposed? No, nobody opposed. Which brings us to four point O. Okay, this is about, um, mail-in voting for people seventy and over, uh, which is something new we're going to do this year. So on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy. Seconded by. Councillor Schaefer. Um, it was resolved to allow any person who is registered as a voter on the electoral list and who is seventy years of age or over on the day fixed for the poll to be able to vote by post for the general election of November seventh, twenty twenty-one, and for the repetitions that could result from it, if it's a request. And to send the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing and the Chief Electoral Officer an authenticated copy of this resolution. Anyone opposed? Okay, and I'll just mention this wording is provided to us by the Quebec government. And for those who remember that we passed something similar last meeting, uh, that was slightly premature, because Quebec law hadn't been fully adopted at that time, but it's been adopted now, so that's why we're repassing this. Okay, item five. Um, this has to do with, um, bylaw number one thousand one dash seven. On motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy. It is resolved to approve bylaw number one thousand and one dash seven entitled bylaw modifying zoning bylaw number one thousand and one dash two. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. Brings us to.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I was muted. I was muted. I'd like to, I'd like to, I'm not opposing, by the way. I'm a Ford, because I voted on the first call, and I'm voting again. Uh, but I would like to make a, a note, and I make a statement here where I, and, and I'm sure we will have a chance to discuss this going forward about the, uh, uh, question that I raised, how the council feels uh, selling very, the only piece of land we have in Hampstead that we will be selling it publicly. And maybe the most important decision of this council, of this last mandate of this council, uh, this to be done, uh, just five months before the election coming up in November. So I'm not against this. I'm approving this at this point. And I'm sure there will be more discussion going forward as we progress with this.
Uh, I'm sorry, but councillor, councillor Eddy, we're not discussing that issue.
Alfassi.
I'm sorry. Oh, this is not the bylaw zoning. I'm sorry, I'll take it back.
Not at all.
I'm sorry, I thought that this is the one that we thought, this is the bylaw one, zero, one, that's fourteen. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So I'll make that statement again.
Okay, so now we're on, I believe, um.
Six.
Six.
Item six.
So, uh, this one has to do with, um, tax rates to cover the town's expenses for the year twenty twenty-one. Um, and I believe that one of the councillors may have a comment here. I'm not sure before.
Yes. Yes, so I, I, I asked the question and Maitre Tap wasn't on. So just to clarify, Maitre Tap, um, on the, I'll read the French one, because that is the decree. Um, on item one, one A of Article Two, it says our charge minimum, the cinq dollars par logement ou par unité ou par tarif vague, uh, imposing, uh, does it say anywhere else in the bylaw that it's a fifty dollars a year? Or is it a one-time fee? Because as it states right now, uh, to the, to the layperson, it would be that you charge me fifty dollars, and that's it. But if it's an annual fee on an empty, uh, on an empty logement, um, in order to cover costs, then I understand.
We have to understand what that we're talking with a, a yearly budget, so it's every year.
I understand, but okay.
But every year, we're gonna have to, to goes on. So as the tax are every year, that's a tag that coming back, there's no tag that is once for all. That's a tag that will probably come back every year, yeah.
I know, but it's. But the, the English version is, it does not say about it. Uh, it says water consumption tariff. It doesn't say tax. And it says a minimum charge of fifty dollars per dwelling. So if it is, I understand it's a yearly tax. I get it, and I know it. But I'm saying it should say the word, in my opinion, a minimum charge of fifty dollars per year, just to be, because otherwise, you charge me fifty dollars for my vacant house in twenty twenty-one? But twenty twenty-two, I don't know.
Yeah, but.
Different. In twenty twenty, it's not an annual fee of fifty dollars. It's this year's budget, we are going to charge you fifty dollars if your house is vacant. And then next year, we're going to have, we possibly a different budget and different amounts. And next year, we're going to have a tariff for the water. And next year, we might decide that we're going to charge you forty dollars or sixty dollars, depending on what our fixed costs are. So for this year, we're charging fifty dollars if your house is vacant. Next year, we will see what we charge you if your house is vacant, because the fifty dollars is to cover our fixed cost, even if you're not having any water going through your pipes.
I, I get it. Okay, no problem. Fair enough. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. And it also says in the title it's for twenty twenty-one, so. Okay, so now that we're okay with that, uh, on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved to approve bylaw number ten twenty-six dash one entitled bylaw modifying bylaw number ten twenty-six decree and imposing the cover town's expenses for the year twenty twenty-one. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, that brings us to item number seven. Um, okay, this is a, um, adoption of a bylaw modifying tariffs. Okay, on motion of councillor.
Gordon Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved to approve bylaw number ten ten dash fourteen entitled bylaw modifying tariffs, bylaw number ten ten. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. Brings us to, oh. Um, item eight. This one, uh, is, uh, bylaw modifying our zoning bylaw. And let me just see something. Okay, um.
Just to understand, Mr. Mayor, we are modifying bylaw, uh, one thousand one dash one, and not only one thousand one. It's one thousand one dash one, which is modified by one thousand one dash eight.
This is to do with what?
Yeah, I have a question about this.
This is to do with fines relating to pools and their request and their requirement to have a self-locking and latching mechanism.
Yes.
Pierre, Pierre, there was a question before with regards to the specific wording that if a, a gate closes and there's no. that if a gate closes and there's nobody viewing it, it has to have a padlock. So what I mentioned was that there are self-closing doors that also have a built-in lock, like what I just bought. So it locks automatically and has a key, so it would not require a padlock. So I'm just suggesting that we change the word padlock for lock.
Uh, my answer would be, I understand, Mr. Eddy, but the, the technical term that were used were made by, um, the, uh, by Mario and his team. So I will suggest that he can make the. I don't know. That's the text I received. If everyone said lock will be good enough, but I'm not sure about the technical matter, if it's what the law says and what we, what are our obligations.
Well, if you want to be careful, then you just instead of padlock, put secure lock.
I mean, I, I think the question is, you know, are, are we really going to find ourselves in a situation where residents are going to get ticketed because they have a physical keyed lock and not a padlock? And if so, would a court really, you know, rule against the residents in that regard?
I don't think so.
I think that public security exercises a relative judgment when they're going around and they're seeing is there a lock, a self-latching mechanism, and is the gate locked or not?
If that's the case, then we should write the law as per what it should be, rather than say, I'm going to write an incorrect law and just assume that people are going to have good judgment.
I think we have to implement what the law is.
So then it should just be a secure lock rather than a padlock.
What is the law? What is the law?
I don't know. That was made by Mario and his team, as I said. I didn't check every aspect.
So can we defer this until we get an explanation?
I believe if we put secure lock, it would be no problem or whatever.
Now, um, if I may say a word.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, in my opinion, using the word lock or secure lock is the same. Okay? We do not need to specify if it's a padlock or a chain lock or, you know, that sort of thing. A lock is a lock. I think it's well understood.
Yeah, that's what I agree.
I agree with Richard. So we'll change it to a lock.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got the word pad in front of the three letters in front.
Okay, uh, what I was understanding from Richard, he was saying whether it's padlock or lock or secure lock, it's all the same as long it's a lock. That's what I heard.
I would say put it just lock. You don't need to qualify it.
Okay, just lock.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll put a note that we changed the word for lock.
Okay, and I have a question on this bylaw, um, which I never got answered. And that is, uh, section one, item three says, "All other provisions of section 25 that apply." I'm just not sure what that means.
Just checked.
Because this is 25.1. So that was an excerpt of, of 25, I'm assuming. So.
Yes.
This is only about 25.1. So I'm not sure what 25.2, 25.3, 25, whatever are, so.
Well, 20. Uh, point one and two are self-explanatory.
No, 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 no. It's 25.1, point 1, point 2, and point 3. Though that, 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 that number 1, 2, and 3 is not 25.1, 25.2, 25.3. That's.
Correct.
That's, yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, what does the 3, 25.13, what's the 3 mean?
That all other sections 25 apply. Bylaw 25, which we don't have the full bylaw here. We only have the excerpt.
Yeah, we have the excerpt here. I tried to find it. Okay, just give me a second. The system is very slow.
I will try and find it.
The implication is that there are fines in section 25. That's the implication, but I don't know if it's true.
This is section. I cannot open my folders. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I suggest, I suggest we pass it. I can't see that that line. It's either meaningless or it's not going to cause any harm. So.
Yeah, yeah.
So is everybody okay? Anybody want to move this and second it and all that good stuff?
We'll, we'll change lock for, instead of padlock. That's no problem.
Yeah, we'll change that. Okay, on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Pardon.
Pardon. It is resolved to approve bylaw number 1001-8 entitled bylaw modifying zoning bylaw number 1001. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, that brings us to item nine. Having to do with permits and certificates on motion of councillor.
Pardon.
Pardon. Seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved to approve bylaw number 1004-2 entitled bylaw modifying bylaw number 1004 regarding permits and certificates. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. Uh, 10. Okay. Let me just see something. This is the one where I think councillor Alfassi wants to say something. So councillor Alfassi, this is your time before we pass number 10, uh, which is the adoption of the second draft bylaw, 1002-2 entitled bylaw modifying the cadastro operations zoning bylaw number 1002-1. Councillor Eddy.
Alfassi.
Sorry, councillor Alfassi.
Okay, so what I was saying is I will be voting for the second draft of this bylaw, which actually deals with the, uh, the, uh, public work yard, uh, that part of it we're going to be selling in the near future. Um, my, my concern was very simple. This is a very important decision that, or maybe, as I said before, the most important decision of this mandate, to sell piece of land of the, of the town of Hampstead and, and the only piece of land today, um, in an era where, uh, land are very, very valuable. And I'm sure when this comes for sale, uh, hopefully the price will be in line with what's in the market, but that's another issue. My question here is, isn't it better to wait? Uh, because the election coming up in five months, isn't it better to pause and let the next council that will be elected to then make the call? Because five months difference, actually, it's not five months. By the time this will go on the market, it'll be, let's say, another two months at least. So that means this, this basically.
It'll go on the market mid-June.
Mid-June and the elections.
The second, second week of June.
Okay, good. So it'll be on market second week of June, which brings us to about four months before or four and a half months before the election. So I brought the question to the council members, and I think it's beautiful that there is only three resident that are listening to this comment.
Six now.
Six.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Six.
Six.
Six. Wow, wow. So isn't it better to hold off? I actually, again, I repeat, I am supportive of selling the piece of land. Absolutely. I voted for the first draft. I will vote for the second draft. I think it'll be fair and prudent for us to act responsibly and wait until the new mandate, the new council be in here in force and, and make that decision or vote for it at that point. So that was my comment. I'll welcome any comment from anyone on council, including the mayor.
I would like to state the following. Uh, primarily councillor Eddy has worked on this project at least for the past four years. Every councillor, to the best of my recollection, has supported every step taken towards this eventual sale of this land. I think that it's within our competence and within the mandate when we were elected four years back to vote on the sale of this land. I don't see why another council, uh, newly elected should have more right than we do when this council has done everything to make it possible that this land be sold. So therefore, I think we do have every right on the part of this council to vote. Thank you.
Yeah, I will also just give you my comments, councillor Alfassi. I, uh, I do agree with councillor Schaefer. We have an obligation to govern until the end of our mandate, and our mandate does not finish four or five months before the end of our term. Uh, if this was a new project that just came to light, I would agree that it's, uh, you know, a big project. This is something that's been going on for the entirety of this mandate and began last mandate. I think everybody's well aware of the intentions of the council and this file, and I have no problem going forward with it. That being said, you know, it's not the only piece of land. A future council may decide they want to sell Wexford Park, for example. It's, uh, it's up to a future council. I don't think anybody here would ever, you know, agree to something like that. But the point is, is that, you know, we, we're in a position where we're acting, you know, we've done their work. We've done the due diligence. We put everything in motion. There's no reason to stop a project just because an election is coming up. We have a responsibility to continue governing.
Okay, any other comment?
Yeah, and I, I don't want to reiterate what, what my two colleagues said, but I also want to state that, um, more recently, uh, throughout this process where we were seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, councillor Eddy was giving us some updates on where we are, uh, the status and whatnot. And I think, I think we've done everything possible to, to advance this to, to where it is right now.
Yeah, and just, just one quick thing. I, I would totally agree with councillor Alfassi if the process was being rushed and we were, you know, trying to push this in before the end of the mandate. Uh, I think that we've, we've laid this out over the past few years, such that everything has been done in accordance with the law and methodically and, and with as much detail as necessary.
Warren, I have to disagree with you. I have to disagree with you because how many times we talked about rushing process and get this done, get that done, have weekly meetings and rushing just to be going out to the market and sell the piece of land? So don't say we were not, again, I'm not against the project.
Yeah, and this thing is rushed over the last seven years. That's a very slow rush.
I repeat it again. This idea to sell the land originally came from councillor Alfassi.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay? And Alfassi brought it to councillor when I was in urban planning and American be a witness to that. Besides that, all I can tell you, I'm still on favor. I repeated the four time. However, I still believe four months before the election is not responsible to make such an important decision, very important decision, to sell valuable piece of land and rare piece of land that Hampstead has. That's my opinion. I'm on record to say that, and I'm happy that this is on record. I'm sure there will be more discussion going forward. And I hope there will, a resident will engage to discussions with the councillors and have some kind of discussion going forward.
So, so two things. First of all, I don't think this was rushed and we never had weekly meetings on this or I was never invited to such weekly meetings. Uh, this has been going on for months and months. But councillor Alfassi, so are you voting in favor of this? And, and if so, then why bring it up? I'm just, I'm confused where you're standing. You're saying to wait, but you're going to go with it anyways.
Yeah, I repeat, I'm voting for the second draft. There will be more opportunity to bring this discussion to the table to forefront. It's responsibility of every councillor. You're entitled of the way you feel. Everybody's entitled. And obviously, I've been for the last four years in a minority. I'm used to it, right? So nothing changes for me, but I have to be sleep well at night and I say my piece. My piece is, I am in favor. I will vote for the second draft and I will continue to push for this project, especially if it will come next Monday. Now, we're going to be going forward. There will be more discussion on this and we'll see how this develops. Otherwise, I can always change my vote if I feel that things don't go the way I feel personally.
Okay. If I may intervene, just on a technical point, you, the resolution tonight is not to sell a piece of land. It's to prepare the, the, the whole legal matter to be able to sell it eventually. So voting for the second draft doesn't mean you sell it or you not sell it. It's simply to prepare the whole thing, legally speaking, that we may sell it this year or in five years, doesn't matter, but this is not a resolution about selling anything tonight.
Thank you for clarifying, Pierre Tap. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're at item 10 on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
I'm sorry, Eddy?
Yeah. Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved to approve the second draft bylaw number 1002-2 entitled bylaw modifying the cadastro operations zoning bylaw number 1002-1. Anyone opposed? Okay, no one's opposed. And that brings us to item 11. Um, an adjustment to our nuisance bylaw. Um, notice of motion was given by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. That draft bylaw number 795-10 entitled bylaw modifying bylaw number 795-2 regarding nuisance will be submitted to the council for adoption. All council members have received a copy of draft bylaw number 795-10 and a motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw was made. Which brings us to, um, 12, which is that draft bylaw.
Can you, when, when you introduce these things, for the eight people that are there, they're just a series of numbers and they have no clue what we're talking about. So maybe we, just a little, um.
Summary.
Summary.
I, I tried to for the more interesting things. And yes, I was about to for this one, I could do it after we pass it or before, but since you brought it up, I will mention what this is about. Uh, two key things. One, this bans, uh, the use of gas-powered, um, leak blowers between June 1st and, uh, September 30th. And two, the earliest you can start doing noisy landscaping work is now going to be 8:00 AM on weekdays instead of 7:00 AM on weekdays. Uh, these two things have been requested by quite a number of residents. Yet another one contacted me today with the same, uh, issues. So that's what this is about. Um, so on motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor. It is resolved to approve bylaw number 795-10 entitled bylaw modifying bylaw number 795-2 regarding nuisance. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And just to explain, um, this will have to be adopted a second time. And I believe it'll be on the agenda of the regular council meeting on June 7th, uh, if I'm not mistaken. And that means that I have to sign it after it's passed. So approximately June 10th or so is when this will come into effect. Um, and that's what's going on there. Number 13, uh, notice of motion. Um, uh, contract management bylaw. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer's. Um, that draft bylaw number 1020-1 entitled bylaw modifying bylaw number 1020 on contract management uh, will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a copy of the draft bylaw number 1020-1. My motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw was made. Um, and now before.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I missed the point number 12. Uh, it was proposed and second. I missed the point. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think it was councillor Eddy and councillor Goldwax.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Councillor Goldwax, okay.
And 13 was, the notice of motion was by councillor. Thirteen was, the notice of motion was by councillor Shafer.
It does no problem for this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we're at fourteen, passing uh, the by law having to do with contract management.
So why don't you explain it a bit, Bill?
Yes, I will. I can, and it's very verbal and I will have to and I'll have to read some of it. But in a nutshell, Quebec has passed a law saying that we should give preference to suppliers that are based in Quebec. That's what it's about.
That's basic.
That that's basically what it is. So we being creatures of the province, we are dutifully passing this by law. Uh, I think we are. Okay, so uh, we already had the firster and the seconder. So
No, this one, no, we had the firster for the notice of motion, but we didn't go to the uh
The adoption.
For the adoption.
Yeah. Okay, so on motion of councillor.
Shafer.
Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved to approve draft by law number ten twenty dash one entitled by law modifying by law number ten twenty on contract management. Okay, anyone opposed? No. So as I said, it's basically, it doesn't say we have to uh, use only suppliers in Quebec. But it says we are allowed to give preference, all other things being equal to suppliers from Quebec. That's basically what it says. Okay, fifteen. Um. Authorization for a director general. Uh, motion of councillor.
Edry.
Edry, segmented by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. It is resolved that the director general be authorized on behalf of the town of Hampstead to sign the renewal of the agreement between the town of Mount Royal and the town of Hampstead for public security dispatch services at a cost of forty four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and twenty five cents. Taxes included for the twenty twenty one uh, year with the possibility of renewal in twenty twenty two at the same cost increased by three percent. Uh. There is some um, wording here that has to be taken out. Um.
Yeah, I just want to bring to your attention that the French says service de repatriation d'appel, but the English says renewal of website. It shouldn't be a website. It should be services.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll we'll make the the correction.
Thank you. Okay, so anybody
Just so everyone knows, it was already updated. The the latest package has the English and French that's corrected.
I'm in the final.
Yeah, I'm in the final, number fifteen. It says um, it says uh, with the town of Mount Royal for public security dispatch.
Okay, so I don't know.
Next to thirty nine thousand, it says renewal of website.
Okay, anyway, the point is, we all know what it's about. Perfect. Nobody opposed. That's adopted. Sixteen. Is uh, authorizing the mayor, the town clerk, director general. Um, design um, deeds of servitude and or transactions involving town property. On motion of councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer, segmented by councillor.
Edry.
Edry. It is resolved that town's mayor and in his absence, his her absence, the pro mayor, the town clerk, and in their absence, the assistant town clerk or the town's director general be authorized to sign on behalf and in the name of the town of Hampstead all necessary documents pertaining to deeds of servitude and or transactions involving town property. Anyone opposed? Okay, and this one, four are now, seven attendees. We lost one. Um. It's basically mostly because we're getting ready to sell half of the public works yard. Um. Seventeen. Is to authorize the director general to sign an owner's approbation for file one three zero five nine nine three. On motion of councillor.
Edry.
Shafer.
Seconded by councillor Shafer. It was resolved that the director general be authorized on behalf of the town of Hampstead to sign in the presence of land surveyor, Mr. Louis Philippe Folquet. The owner's approbation in the matter of file number one three zero five nine nine three. Copy of which is attached here too. Anyone opposed?
Just to clarify, this is also for the public works yard reorganization. This is for the public works building side.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, anyway, no one opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And we're almost finished and the attendees are dropping like flies. We're down to six. Okay, number eighteen. Approval of the hiring list of blue collar auxiliary employees for the community services and recreation department. It was proposed by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer, segmented by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. And resolved, the town council approves the hiring of blue collar auxiliary employees detailed on the list from the community services and recreation department. The hiring is subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP local three oh one and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed?
No, just a quick question, just a quick question though, please. Uh, Richard, uh, based on the tasks I see that it's for is for the um, ensuring the cleanliness and the hygiene of the washrooms during COVID? Are any of their salaries uh, um, reimbursable by under the COVID program?
My answer is yes, as long as they do that and nothing else, the whole amount is admissible for reimbursement by the agglomeration and the uh, and the some Quebec.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, thank you. And um, finally, uh, German, would someone like to move a German councillor?
Goldwax.
Goldwax.
Councillor Shafer, segmented by councillor Goldwax. Is resolved, council meeting is adjourned. Anyone opposed? Okay. For the six people still here, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Pierre.
And for the councillors, it's time to leave this meeting and resume our caucus meeting. We have a couple more items to cover. Okay, thank you. Goodbye, everybody. Good night.
Good night, everybody.